Okay. Next up.
So the Second Amendment has to do with the salary of the council. And I apologize for not having the graph, but Craig's staff.
Second one is actually the initial petition.
Okay, can I do the salary next?
Okay, it's number three.
Okay, let me do number three. So the salary, Craig's staff surveyed 12, 12 peer cities? Fifteen peer cities. And if you, if you look at the average of those 15 peer cities, the dollar amount for the mayor and the dollar amount for the council members is basically the exact average of what's proposed here, which is that you just, you tie the salary to the salary of the governor with one-half of the governor's salary for the mayor, one-fourth for the council members. That way, you don't have to keep having charter amendments every 10 years. Like we're, you know, this, this came for a vote of the people 10 years ago, and now we're talking about it again. But if you, if you just tied it to the governor's salary or a percentage thereof, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to keep doing this. And again, when we surveyed the 15 peer cities, the average of those 15 cities is almost identical to the numbers as proposed here currently, which would be half the governor's salary and a quarter. I think that, as I mentioned on the last one, there is a risk, there is a, with the current system, there is, you're really constricting and limiting the number of people who can run for council. If you serve 80,000 people well, which is what we're asked to do, which is larger than a state senate district, you're effectively doing that for less than minimum wage, less than $7 an hour if you're working 40 hours a week on this. I'm not even sure that's, how that's legal. But, but it is a salary, and I guess that's how it is. But it's not, it, it, it has the potential to limit the number of people who can run. It has the potential to keep those who are trying to serve the public in financial distress. I think that it, I think it's fiscally conservative to, to decrease your risk of, you know, people don't like this word, corruption, whatever. It decreases, if you pay people a living wage, I think that it insulates the taxpayer when you've got a constant parade of millionaires and billionaires with very big development projects coming across, you know, the nine of us. Not us, because I don't have concerns about the nine of us, but think about 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now. Do we really think that there's not some risk of something happening in 10, 20, 30 years if you're paying people less than minimum wage to do this job, and they're in financial distress? That's, that's one consideration. The number of people who are eligible to run, so you don't have a pool, which is predominantly retirees, those who are independently wealthy, et cetera. Any thoughts?
Yeah, Ed, I mean, I'm not in disagreement with what you're recommending. I would just want to clarify it, even though I know you're just trying to build a case for your point, which is well-taken. But in terms of corruption, the difference between getting paid 12 to 36, if the person doesn't have, you know, certain level of ethics and they're going to be just as tempted if they're making 36,000, if they're going to make 12,000. That doesn't worry me. I think you might have a better chance of getting this passed if you scaled that back to maybe twice what we're currently being paid, say 24 instead of 36. Just personal opinion.
I think that's reasonable, David. I think, you remember 10 years ago, the voters voted on doubling it, and they, they voted it down. And I think that, I think that there was, there was no campaign, there was no explaining to the taxpayers why it might be actually fiscally conservative. It might be penny-wise, pound foolish to do what we're doing now. But there was, but the voters took that idea of doubling it, and they said no. Because, and I, I don't think it solves the underlying problem. I don't think it necessarily is a living wage. I don't think, I mean, we deserve as, what are we, David? The 27th largest city in America. We deserve to have a full-time mayor in the 27th largest city in America. Why do, we have to have, you know, mayors who are working two jobs? We have to have council members who are working however many jobs.
Yeah, no, and I certainly do agree with you, especially with respect to the mayor, because that's a different role than each one of us. And I know we all put in a varying amount of hours in our jobs, but certainly the mayor, without question, needs to get paid a much higher salary, because it is a full-time job. We can get by, you know, 15, 20 hours a week, especially on off weeks, you know, when we're not meeting. We still go to homeowners' meetings, we still take calls. I get that, but.
I agree, David. There is a difference between mayor and council. And if you look at the data that Craig provided us in terms of, you know, mayors per population, even council members per population, we are, we're an outlier.
I agree.
So Channel 9 can say, oh, they're proposing to triple the salary and stuff like that. Well, the reality is, we are so far below in terms of what we're paying our mayor per, you know, capita, per, per person represented, which is what, 650,000 people now? We're an outlier. So increasing it just brings you to like the average of these 15 cities, of these 15 peer cities. It does, if you want to amend it, to just do the mayor? If you want, I mean, I, whatever, it's two separate problems, and they both need to be solved.
No, I agree, Ed, and I'm not against this. I'm just giving you my opinion.
Yeah.
Feedback. And if the citizens voted down doubling it, I can imagine what they're going to do by suggesting we're going to triple it. Just a point.
Yeah, it's a fair point.
Thank you. I have no dog in this hunt, because as most of you know, or should everybody should know by now, I don't tend to run for reelection. So I'm strictly an outsider with the comments I'm making, right? But in looking at their landscape, changes that I would make to this recommendation here is I would cut the council salary. Instead of going to 37,000, I'd cut it to go to 24 in a small increment. I'd cut the mayor's back one, and I would not tie them to the governor's ship. I would just have it done for us locally here. I think he got a better chance of selling it. Thank you.
So you would do the 12 and 24? I mean, 24 and 48?
No, okay. Right now, I'd go, yeah, 24 and 48.
Yeah.
And I, and I would not tie it to the governor's salary, because I think that's got a negative connotation.
Okay. And just, just to be clear, we're talking about this beginning in 2023 for council and 2022 for mayor.
Councilman Stone, cipher.
Just some feedback. And Kenny, correct me where I'm wrong. But when we, in 2009, sat down with Willa and made amendments to the charter, everything passed except for one item. And I thought, maybe wrong, I thought that the only thing that didn't pass was a pay raise, a nominal pay raise to the mayor for like $12,000, and it was a resounding no.
It was mayor and council.
Right, it was the council from 12 to 24, and, yeah, and mayor from 24 to 48.
Yeah.
But, but that was on the ballot in November of '08.
Correct.
Because it was on the special election when I was elected.
Okay, yeah, with all the other charter change amendments that the committee had suggested.
My point is, I'm not confident that the taxpayers of Oklahoma City will vote for any of this.
Okay, so what would you like to do with your resolution?
Well, unless someone wants to amend it, then I would live if we introduce it and it's turned on April 23rd.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, which means we'll have a vote. Which means I will say, and it's not urging anyone, I just want to explain myself before I do it. I'm going to vote no, not because I disagree with Councilman Shadid on the substance. I actually agree with him so much on the substance, I'm voting no, because I think this is not the way to get it passed. So I disagree with him on the strategy. I think it will fail, and then we will not really be, as a community, able to talk about this for another 10 years. I think the way, this particular issue, which as he pointed out, was the only one that failed 10 years ago, it becomes a lightning rod, right? And, and I think to overcome that, you have to have more citizen involvement. It probably needs to come out of a committee that, that involves citizens, and a case is being made to the community why this is good government. And if it comes just from us, and it's voted on four months from now with really no campaign, and probably none of us out there trying to defend it or articulate why it should happen, that's highly unlikely. You might, but the rest of us will probably say, oh, we're, we're fine either way, because we don't want to be tied to that. You know, I just think it will very likely fail. And, and I do think it is actually a pretty important issue for a city of our size to talk about. And so I'd like to see this particular issue, I voted for the last one, but I'd like to see this particular issue go through more of a process. And as has been articulated, this wouldn't even change anybody's salary for three or four years from now. So we certainly have time to talk about it in many citywide elections between now and 2022 to, to debate this and maybe get more critical mass in the community for the idea. So how would you feel about the initiative petition process then? If you had 6,500 people that signed and said they wanted to have this on the ballot? That would be, that would seem to imply there was more public support for it, yes. I mean, that certainly seems like a better strategy to actually pass it. Even then, you may or may not pass it, but I mean, this, this just coming from the elected officials with no recommendation from any committee or anything, I think, is not the way to get it done. So I will respectfully vote no on introducing it. But I wanted to say that before I did it. I don't think I voted no the entire time I've been mayor yet, so. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any other people need to explain themselves before they do it? Okay, we'll cast our votes. It's failed to be introduced by a vote. What, see, my red light doesn't even work. There we go. There we go. See, I don't even know how to vote no. It fails to be introduced by a vote of 3 to 6. Okay. Charter change three.
Charter change three has to be introduced. So I think that, you know, we had, again, we had meeting a couple weeks ago, there were at least 25, about 25 people that signed up to volunteer on those last two issues. So I think you will see this. I think it's lost to a certain level of opportunity. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Oh, your microphone's not on. So this, the gist of this is that this is, this is doing what's been done in many states. When our state was created, when our city was created, everyone wanted to make very sure and clear that the people had the right to petition their government, that if a critical mass of the population wanted there to be a vote of the people on, on any non-administrative subject, they could do so. And the Supreme Court has repeatedly come down hard to defend that right, even using words typically reserved for religious affairs like sacred, that the right to petition your government is sacred. So, but according to state law, we, we have 90 days to collect the signatures or anyone who did an initiative petition process. Many states and cities across the United States are amending that to increase the amount of time that you have to collect the signatures. It allows it to be more organic. It allows it to be more volunteer-driven. It, it allows you to not rely on paid signature gatherers. I think it decreases the risk of fraud. When we just had an initiative petition on the income tax for teachers, we did have some fraud. We had people who were paid $2 a signature, $1 a signature, that would write down the name of everybody on their church directory, for example. Or people who were deceased, but were, you'd look them up as registered voters, and it would show up, but they were committing fraud. Anyway, that's also something, if you Google, you see that that happens across the country. So efforts like this are to, to try and make the efforts more organic, more volunteer-driven, more democratic. That, that's really the argument. I think that, you know, an initiative petition, 110% will be moving forward. If the council weren't to move with this, I think that one would be more like 180 days today. 150 days was kind of seen as more of a compromise. That's the argument for it. I, I, I'm not comfortable necessarily, and this sounds odd, but I, if there's nobody else that wants to move this forward, then I would say, let it go. Because I believe I have a potential financial conflict of interest, not today, as we sit here today, but in the future. I, I plan to, to start a firm and run municipal and state initiative petitions. I plan to have, to be in that business, if you will. And this, this could be seen as decreasing the cost of running an initiative petition. So I think that I potentially have, not today, but in the future, I will have a conflict of interest. And I wouldn't want to move this forward unless there were, and, and the final vote, of course, would be on April 23rd. But if there's no support for it, let's just, let's just let it go and do it by initiative petition. If there is support, by all means, somebody move it forward. This is consistent with some things. I just want to acknowledge, David had some things in the state legislature that were great and very grateful for and appreciative of the, the bills you introduced to make initiative petitions easier and more democratic. At the state level, yeah. At the state level. It can, it can serve a very important function, yes.
Yeah. So we had moves to deny.
I just want somebody else to, to move it or adoption, or, or let's just let it go. I'll take that as we let it go. Okay. Okay. So Kenny and Francis, we at this stage have adopted basically C1 amendment, proposed amendment one. Do we also need to do that for C2?
Yes.
Proposed amendment one.
Just as that amendment.
Okay, just, I mean, he can make whatever motion he wants.
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Shadid, so, as a bit of housekeeping, we did, we did introduce 11 C1 for your first proposal. We also need to do a resolution, I don't even know the difference, but for 11 C2 for that first proposal, if you'd like it to complete all the tasks necessary to be considered on April 23rd.
No, it's, C2, resolution C2 is the resolution that notifies the county election board of the election and directs the clerk to submit other items required by election law.
So you need to do that for the one that is currently moving forward right now?
In other words, you're adopting the resolution.
Okay, all right. So this is a motion and a second for 11 C2, which was the proposal number one regarding holding two offices. We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. It is adopted by a vote of seven to one. Okay. You do have the right, Councilman Shadid. I presume you do not wish to make a motion on the other two proposals for that at this point? Okay. All right. Let's do, let's go around the horseshoe. We've had so much business on items from council today. I almost forgot, we usually are custom.
Do we need to go back to C1?
No, because Ed never moved to amend that to make it three resolutions. It was still only one, so.
Wait, so I need to, we need to clean that up?
Yes.
Okay. Can you make a motion to rescind the approval just given to item 11 C2? And then we need to amend it to just include the one? Okay, all right. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now reapprove it as amended with just the first proposal.
Right.
Just say so moved.
Correct.
All right, motion and a second. This is, again, a substantive vote, so on that, on that proposal. So that, your vote is different than the first time. Do you want it to be? All right. Passes seven to one. Okay. There we go. Perfect. Councilman Stone, cipher, why don't we start with you? Anything today? Okay. Councilwoman Nice?
I do want to say, we want to thank those who came out for the Northeast meeting we had at Prospect. We had quite a few people, and it is on Facebook if anyone wants to just kind of recap what was talked about. Also, I want to thank the Embark Director, Jason Fairbrush. We rode this past Sunday Route 22, 9:30 a.m., and it was a full bus. So that means, obviously, people are taking advantage of Sunday service, and they were more bright-eyed and bushy-tailed than I was on a Sunday morning. But we were able to give some seven-day passes away and some t-shirts and stocking caps. So that was always great to connect with, with the community and ride the bus. And we had a couple other things. Oh, we have upcoming forum, How to Do Business with the City. It's going to be on April the 2nd at the Zoo Education Center from 9 a.m. until 11 a.m. And I want to commend Oklahoma Christian University. I went there last Monday, I believe it was, or Tuesday. And they, they took, just took time to honor 18 students from 1969 that were kicked off the campus due to some, some racial inequality that happened at that, at the campus. And it was, it was really good to see them bring those people back, although some of those people, that they didn't want to come back because of how it changed their lives in that dramatic manner, for them to not be able to attend classes anymore. But I think, in my opinion, when you have incidents like this, and I think half the people even around us had no clue this happened in 1969, on that campus, on that small campus. But to go back, recognize it, and also at least say, we're sorry, or try to find some kind of reparations for, for the people that were engaged in that, I think is commendable. So I definitely commend Oklahoma Christian for that. And it is Women's History Month, so make sure you honor your women. And Meg, I'm going to say some things about you, but I'll save them until the end of the month on your last meeting. So, and talk about some other great women that came through our city council and the city of Oklahoma City.
Mayor, thanks. I have just one quick thing, and Craig, this is really maybe for you and for Doug Cooper, if you wouldn't mind looking at this. We made an amendment to our fee schedule for our parks about a year and a half ago. And previously, we'd had a provision that if a concert was held in the park, we collected 20% of their ticket sales as part of the fee. And that has now been amended to any event that sells tickets, we collect 20%. And I think we're just beginning to enforce that. Lots of people that use our parks are nonprofits, and they are declining to do events in our parks because of that. And so I wish we could revisit the conversation, if you'd take a look at that for me. Thank you.
Councilman Shadid? Okay. That concludes items from council. City manager reports?
Yeah, so we're going to cancel the meetings. Trouble. All right. So we are going to postpone the two presentations that we had for today. I think what we might do is the one that we've put off a couple of times on the council priorities. That's really the Planning Department Development Services. We may include those, just roll those into their budget presentations when they do those. It's just, a lot of the information is the same with what they present. So we may do that. And then we'll try to push the Better Streets update, the annual update, to the next meeting.
Okay.
They still, the council has the information on the report, but we'll have the presentation at the next meeting.
Very important. I love talking about our $800 million street repair initiative, the largest in city history. That's my, that's my talking point, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Citizens to be heard. We've had two who signed up under item 13. Jessica and Gray Thompson? Oh, this is Gray?
Jessica, while you're coming up, I want to say what, how unbelievably good Gray has been. Just a little peep from time to time, but he is so great. Is Olivia at school?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be fast.
Hello, council. Okay. Jessica Thompson, 1414 Northwest 14th Street. Usually I come here and talk about Class and Ten pin, but fortunately, I don't have to do that today. I get to talk about something else. I'm here in support of the OKC Maps for Motorsports. And I wanted to put, you know, let council know that there are residents that want this. And I wanted it to be documented on video as well, so neighbor or residents can see that. You know, citizens were up in arms when the State Fair Speedway was demolished for almost a decade. We have tried to find different areas to participate, including going out of state. Including some of today's millennials, including my husband, they grew up going to the Speedway and, with their parents. And we want to see that tradition live on for the next generation. Currently, people who can afford it, they travel outside of the city and state to pursue their dreams and hobbies. Some of us are grassroots, and we're not quite to that point yet. But if we build a state-of-the-art motorsports complex here, people will come. The State Chamber in September said, "It's time that auto manufacturing made its way back to Oklahoma." People are concerned, and we don't, that we don't have the workforce here. But just think, if we had a motorsports complex that was open and accessible to everyone, this could help build up our workforce and fill the demand for trade jobs. John Chiappe of the Oklahoma Department of Commerce says that we don't have any auto manufacturing here. But we could. We could have the potential to serve as a regional hub for auto manufacturing. And motorsports supports an entire economy of parts, equipments, and services that are consumed each year. Grassroots racing activities contribute to billions of dollars in economic impacts, millions of jobs, and feeds thousands, thousands of small businesses, like my husband. He's a mechanic. This motorsports complex would ideally be open year-round, which allows for continued revenue streams for both the complex and our local economy. In terms of location, ideally, an area that is not in close proximity to housing, of course. I'm a realtor, and I know that people complain about loud noises. So we want to keep that in mind in looking for potential places. Some ideal locations include South Oklahoma City and Northeast, because we can encourage investment in what HUD has deemed opportunity zones that have been assigned here. The Northeast has a concentration of attractions. So if you're wanting to expand upon that, that would be a great area. Close to I-35 would be ideal, a little further away from the houses. The South seems to be lacking in term, in terms of attractions. So perhaps it would be good to expand upon that there. Ideally, we would like to see an increase in retail space surrounding the venue, as well as restaurants. I would like to propose the following sports that the venue could accommodate, which would be autocross, drifting, which is what my husband does, open-wheel touring go-kart track. And all the, all five of those can use the same track. And then also rally, stalk, and drag, And then also rally, stock, and drag, which could extend up to a mile. I've had some people say they'd love to see a mile, and that would really draw people from across the nation to come do 200 miles per hour on a mile-long drag strip. And then which would require a different track for each, so a totaling of four different tracks. I would like to see a venue built using sustainable practices, including solar panels for electric consumption, to help minimize facility costs and maximize profits. I would recommend the city to look into Sonoma Raceway in California as a great example of incorporating different tracks all in one location. Motorsports encompasses community engagement. It can provide fun, safe events for people to attend and participate in. Now, have any of you heard of Oklahoma City Street Outlaws? Okay, so it's a cable network show on the Discovery Channel that takes place here in Oklahoma City for ten seasons now. They have 2.6 million likes on Facebook and 112,000 Twitter followers, and that's more than our mayor. My point here is that Oklahoma City has been in the national spotlight for illegal drag racing, because we don't have a facility here locally that can accommodate such a sport. It is becoming more difficult to find venues to accommodate the sports as well. Why am I here? Well, my husband drifts cars, and we ride, and I like to ride in the passenger seat. Each event we go to is a family affair, and my daughter asks quite often, "When is Dad's next event?" She likes to try and ride in the passenger seat, so I love that. People like my husband are looking for a safe place to hone their skills. A complex can keep people off the streets while also providing an outdoor entertainment venue for people like us to look forward to on the weekends. And I wear this shirt today, I don't know if you can see it from here, but it's my son holding a screwdriver, and my husband working on his motor. My son spends a lot of time with his dad in the garage, and they bond over cars. My husband had to work today because he's a mechanic here downtown, and I'm here, though, for him and my son, who today represents the next generation of potential car enthusiasts. So I also wanted to let people know that we have a petition going on on change.org. It's called OKC Maps for Motorsports, and we have currently 690 signatures of people that support it. I wanted to read just a couple of things that people had to say about it, and it's all been very encouraging. One being, I think OKC needs another outdoor arena for motorsports. I go to Monster Jam every year to see my favorite drivers, but honestly, it sucks. The indoor arenas are too small. They need to bring back the outdoor track. I grew up going to the dirt track races with my family, and like, I'd like to continue that with my kids. And a lot of the conversations on here have been, you know, Oklahoma City deserves this. Racing is a dream for a lot of people, and this gives them a way to live that dream. A lot of people, you know, it's, I'm interested in a semi-local venue to do race car stuff with race car friends, and that kind of goes back to that community engagement in the sport. There's one, I travel two-plus hours to a track currently, and it will help prevent street racing. The city and state needs this. I've never been into it, but it's a good idea, not only revenue, but in family and team building, and for jobs. It's a win-win-win. So that being said, I just wanted to let city council know that there is interest, that people would like to see a motorsports complex, state-of-the-art venue for our residents, and give us something, add to the entertainment that we can do on the weekends with our family and friends. Thank you, Jessica.
For anybody that didn't have the chance to attend the Neighborhood Alliance banquet this year, Jessica was the Good Neighbor of the Year for Class N10 pin. We're really proud of her.
Jessica, I would just like to, as the resident here had, I would like to say thank you. Sandra Stutz in Pile? Stetson? Ah, I see.
Good afternoon, Mayor. City council members. Thank you for allowing me this time, especially the last time just before. You probably need to eat lunch. I came before you today, I have a special concern as a citizen here in Oklahoma City. I am a resident owner. My address is 1107 North Purdue Avenue. I'm in Councilman McAttee's district. Within the last three years, I've lost a husband and a brother and a granddaughter. I am a disabled individual. But to the south and to the west of me, the properties there are zoned, as are two. I've had two businesses get started there. Businesses that create quite a bit of noise, the type of noise that is abrupt. It is destructive to me, it is rest, breaks my rest. It has caused me serious situations in duration. I am not the only neighbor there that has concerns about the noise that these two businesses make and are responsible for. I'm just the only one that has the big enough ovaries to come and talk with you. That was a joke. The illnesses that I suffer from may get better, they may not. I work hard because I need them better. I would want to live. I am concerned because one of the issues I'm having is that I have been making reports to various departments within the city in regards to particularly the fabrication and welding shop that is attempting to be opened, code enforcement, planning, and development. I've been dealing with this since, I believe, the year 17, 3000, I mean, yeah, 2017, might have been March. I started with Mr. Rick Wickenkamp. Needless to say, I have been tossed around from department to department to department. Mr. Hardgrave has been allowed to have do what he's supposed to do in order to, in order to do what he should be responsible for code and planning and what they want. He's been given time and time and time. There have been times when I have had the police out for noise, even for roosters, and the police have been witness to what my concerns were, but at the time, I have not been given the time to sign citations, and I am concerned about that as well. So I'm not so sure. The first thing is that his building, the building that is, I don't know, it's an accessory building, but he's living in it. It is less than five feet from my property line, my stockade fence line. There has been an antenna placed on a pole makeshift. The reception from my television and my communication in my home is terrible. My antennas are now laid on the floor in order to receive reception on my television. I talked with the FCC in Dallas, Texas, an agent who told me, "Well, that's not right. It's something wrong." Yes, I know that. So I'm not so sure what the answer would be. The property owner, who is Mr. Nick Houston of Nick's Lumber on 10th Street, I have sent him certified letters expressing my concerns and asking him for us to get together and let us talk and see what it is that we can come up with. I've stopped by his business to introduce myself and ask him to talk with me. I have not had any response. I have talked with the president of One Nelson Plumbing to ask them to move their box car storage bins as it butts up against my property right there. Well, it's the patio and then my bedroom. And he said to me, "I'm not interested in spending $3,000 or $4,000." It was a little hard to take, because we're just not dealing with $3,000 or $4,000. We're dealing with life and the quality of it. And I must say, the quality of my life, since these businesses have been allowed to start, has been absolutely terrible. The depression is worse, the cardiology problem is worse, and the neurology. I am not so sure what to do. I'm not moving. My husband left me the property, and I'm going to keep it. I have no place else to go. I'm also a minister and had begun to start a program here, a ministry. I have met so many widows who are homeless and who have lost their places due to one reason or another. So I don't know what the answer is, as the young man, Mr. Hardgrave, has been allowed to dig in deeper into the development of this business. The two buildings in question, we had no problems with them because they were once utilized as aluminum storage sheds. So he has received permission to renovate, to remodel, and then there is an accessory building, which I'm not so sure if all of it is legal. The electrical permit for the accessory building was listed as a residential permit. I'm not so sure what is in the larger building, but even the individuals who come out from neighborhood services and from code enforcement, they're not very cordial. Even calling, I have not met such rudeness. I don't stop calling, I continue to do so. If you were to check the records from the Oklahoma City Police Department, I have worked the South Division quite extensively. I don't like doing that. I don't like causing problems, but I'm concerned that the city allowed for a business so close to the boundaries and the abutment of a residential property, too. It doesn't make any sense. What is the answer? I don't know. What would I like? I'd like to ask the council to look at an in-depth review from the development and planning process. He does have planning or site plans and different things. They've come in late, but...
Sandra, you've gone on about seven or eight minutes, and I wanted to be respectful of that, where normally our time limit is three. We do have Bob Teener in the room, who is probably a higher-level person than you've dealt with at our city, and he would love to sit down with you, and I know he will be polite and helpful as best he can.
Who, sir?
And work, he oversees development services. Larry, is there anything you wanted to add? This is in your ward, or is that satisfactory?
Well, I don't know about Mr. McAttee's office. I spoke with Boyd when all this got started. And Boyd said to me, "Well, you should have known that the property was zoned as it was." My husband paid for this property in 1959. I was a year old. Okay, so...
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming in. Thank you for your patience.
I have also reached out to your committee on, what's it called? America's with the Disability Act, and Mr. Wilkins has said that he would assist me as well. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You guys need a raise. You guys are busy.
Thank you. Have a great day. We will now go into executive session for the item previously approved, and we will return.